Okay, there we go. Sorry for the delay. Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, March twenty second, twenty twenty three. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Per certified meeting notice, please.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
For color.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a budget of allegiance. If you've joined me. Next item is the mayor silencing his phone. Changes to the agenda.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I move to modify the agenda. Change the agenda. Section F special business action item. Or section G rather ordinance or resolutions and contracts. Ordinance ten thirty four dash twenty two, commonly known as our parking ordinance. That we postpone or move move this off of tonight's agenda. For a meeting in two weeks.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to amend the agenda to remove, remove item G one to a date certain to be taken up again, June twelfth, twenty twenty three. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as it's written.
Second. A motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move now to special business. Item F one is a appeal hearing for VSR FY twenty twenty two dash zero zero two two. Counselors, is there anyone on the board that needs to declare conflict prior to hearing this appeal? Okay, that's a record reflect reflect. No conflicts. The matter being appealed on this application is the eight six A five F. This is a requirement, conditions of approval that are deemed necessary to protect public health, safety and welfare. Just a minute. Scratch that. The items being appealed on the design review decision were the relocation of a trash can enclosure away from the northeast side of the development. And increase the number of required vehicular parking spaces. Those are the two items that are being appealed. So the order of business will have the appellant state their case. The respondent, which will be the applicant can give their presentation. Their defense. The appellant will have a final rebuttal opportunity. And then we will deliberate or the council will deliberate, make a decision. So with that, is it Chapatur? How do, how do I pronounce the name? Okay, yes, sir. Welcome. If you would, give us your name and address, sir.
So my name is Tom Shopacher. I live at forty four twenty five West Zero Teal Lane in Eagle. The owner of Artist Metals, which is a long time Garden City business there on Chind, and we've been here since nineteen forty one. Can I bring up the PowerPoint? Does that can use this mouse to do that or? It looks like it's up here. Well, that's theirs.
There we go.
Okay. I sent mine in, but I guess. Oh, you haven't. Okay, I'll make this, try to make this as quick as I can. I know that Noah spent our Monday evening talking about garbage dumpsters.
Can we move the?
Sure.
This place up to the top or however you do that.
Minimize it.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. As I said, I'm the owner of a business here in Garden City. We've been here a long time. We have about forty five people working for us. I'm very excited about what's going on in Garden City of what, how it's a mixed, you know, we don't know what Garden City. Sort of the connotation of Garden City many years ago. It's all the exciting things going on are actually exciting for our business and we like being a manufacturing business. With all the different diversity that's going on in this, in the city. So we though had people that couldn't afford to live close by or Boise's housing costs were pretty high. So we decided to try a little trial of buying some homes in Garden City for key employees and two of these properties, two properties are right next to each other and they're next to this, this proposed project. And they're both, they're kind of like on flag lots. So they're back towards the back part of the properties. And they're not oriented facing Adams. So they're behind Adams and they're oriented facing each other. And the, this project has is right to the back fence. And so we'll get to that in a second, but that's the, that's kind of the background of these properties where they're at. I'll show a little map here. So we tried to be various, maybe hard for everybody to see, but try to be very, you know, we knew there was going to be development behind us. So we tried to be really proactive. I tried to be, as soon as the design came out, we were able to give public testimony. I made sure I pointed out that what you see there are the front porches of the two houses. You see they're facing each other and the X is where the garbage enclosure was is proposed. The the shock we had with it was, man, this is going to be sixty units. So there could be you know, hundred plus people in the dumpsters. And you can imagine what might arise with that, with the noise of people taking their garbage out, the garbage truck coming. And so it was sort of right where these two properties adjoin essentially our our two properties and right where these people sit on their front porch. You look to the left, it's about thirty feet, you'd have the the dumpsters for a major multifamily development. So we've participated in the process, gone through. I appreciate the developer and the staff have been very open to talk with, but we just in the design review committee. But we sort of got into an impasse where it was discussed to, to move the, move the dumpsters centrally. They did come up with a, a, a little of improvement and they split the enclosure into two sides. So there's one located where that X is and they'll, they'll walk through that. But and there's one on the other side. It's like a mirror. This is, you can kind of see from a satellite view. It's kind of circled where the, just I'm trying to what I'm trying to think too is if I were sitting on my porch, I think anybody would not want this to be right where it is for how big of a dense and dense of a development it is. So here I was kind of again reiterating this, this space. It's about thirty feet away from the house or the, the front porches. During the review process, the design review committee members had said it would be ideal if it was moved centrally to the, to the project so that it wouldn't be affecting the neighboring properties. It's kind of like if you create a, a, a large complex, you'd think one of the least desirable parts about it, the garbage enclosure necessary, it's, it's a necessary evil would be absorbed by the project itself somewhat like people that are throwing away garbage. It's affecting mainly their living conditions, not the neighbor's living conditions. So as the process went through, we, there was a lot, it's a big project. I appreciate, like I said, the design review committee had a lot of issues to work through with the developer about the look of the project. I think the look you, you all will, you will like the project. It looks good. It, it the design is nice. But some of those design features then limited the ability to, to move this garbage enclosure. So at this point, the thought is it can't be centrally because it impedes the sight line from the street and they wanted it to be transparent and look all the way to the back. So off forty seventh. You know, it's like, that's important in some respects, but a sightline impediment versus it being located next to your house where you hear it and smell it, that kind of thing. To me is important, especially since we have two properties there that are affected. It's sort of, we're unduly affected more than any other neighbor. I wasn't gonna, I was gonna go in on parking. I know you guys are changing the code and there's a lot of talk about it's gonna, this project already has more parking than would be required. But what was frustrating during the process of, you know, as a citizen and a neighbor trying to educate myself on whether this project was to code. Learning of how they could underpark it because it was already being done or the, the sort of green public transit or bike storage or those things that you can put in to avoid the, the guest parking was frustrating because they were able to build it pretty dense, not put that parking in that was in code. And then we were sort of locked in with the density when we needed to move something for this garbage enclosure. So that was a little, little frustrating that it was a rule that was coming and it's, it's a precedent of under parking other projects. I think impeded the ability to have a flexibility for moving things around. I also think because there's no parking on Adams. That should be, should be sort of considered that people that are on Adams have no street parking. So they would park on forty sixth and forty seventh. And if you're letting a major project underpark, you're using up more, more spaces than, you know, we should. But I know that's another big debate and it's going towards a more dense urban zoning anyways. So I think my, my thing is we're just at an impasse. I'm not an architect. I couldn't figure out a perfect solution that was perfect for everybody. Other than we don't want it next to our properties, the two. We've been in this city for a long time. You know, we love this city. I've got great employees that live in those two houses. I'm excited for them. I'm excited for them to be able to bike over the green belt and have a good spot in this like ever improving town. And so it's just it's sort of I owe them to come and try to, you know, fight for making this, moving this thing so that it's not there when they're sitting on their front porch or gardening in the backyard in their front yard. And so I just, I'm asking that you guys send it back to the designer review committee to, to fix it, to find an elegant solution. So that we're not, we're not bearing the brunt of the of the sixty unit apartments garbage enclosures. But again, I want to say thank you to staff and for all yous for listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Questions, counsel? Okay.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just, I guess a comment. It seems to me the main thing is having a border, the property. Right. I mean, the noise to me is like, I, like where I live, I can hear garbage coming from two or three blocks away. They're going to hear that. Yes. Wherever it is.
Right.
So the make is now, I can't tell from the drawing if you'd be able to see the enclosure or whether there's a fence in between.
I think they're putting a fence in.
So you can see them physically.
I, I don't know if the fence is eight feet or ten feet. I can have them speak to that.
That's just a question. I guess I, I'd have because it's called the premise. It's thirty feet, but can you actually see that?
Right, right. I, I think I figured if it was an eight foot fence, they probably wouldn't see it standing in the yard, but they'd, they'd see it sitting on their front porch.
Okay, that's a question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hey, we'll call you back in, in a few minutes.
All right, thank you.
Who's representing the applicant today? Good to see you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Evans, council members, Jeff Bowers, six oh one, Wes Bannick and Boise. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant and landowner in this forty, forty seventh street apartment project, which is only requiring a design review approval. So we are here tonight on an appeal. You just heard the appellant's arguments. So I'm going to try to keep my comments limited to trash enclosures only. Before I get to the specifics of the trash enclosures, I just want to give the council a brief background on the several layers of review this project has had already. So we went to DRC in September for the standard pre-application meeting. We took comments. We came back to them with revisions. We had our first substantive public hearing on February sixth, two thousand, uh, twenty twenty three. At that hearing, notably trash enclosures were discussed. And the, the takeaway from the commissioner's deliberations there was that we should have two trash enclosures on this project. And if you look at the site plan on the right hand side of the screen, I've circled the location of those two trash enclosures in red. So originally as, as submitted, we only had the one enclosure on the northeast side of the project and that, that is the enclosure that is closest to the appellant's property. And per comments from the DRC, we added that second enclosure on the southwest side of the property. So second substantive DRC hearing, March sixth. At that hearing, the project was approved with the two enclosures as, as noted on the site plan here. March thirteenth, the appeal was filed. And after that appeal was filed, we went back to DRC and, and kind of a, an unusual request, but to, to try to nip this appeal in the bud, we asked the DRC to let us do only one enclosure on the southwest side to, to address the appellant's arguments. They held firm on the requirement that we have two enclosures. The basis that they articulated was convenience for the residents. They also noted that due to the design of the app, of, of the, of the project, they did not feel that the enclosures would create any undue burden on any of the neighbors. And as the appellant noted, they really wanted to keep the central corridor of the project open. Which is where all the amenities are. So they didn't want to relocate the trash enclosures to the center of the project. So that brings us to today. To answer a couple of the council members' questions that have come up. Again, I have that same site plan up in the left hand corner that we previously looked at and a more zoomed in version of the trash enclosure area down here on this site plan schematic. So you see the property line. And then seven and a half feet off the property line is the enclosure wall. Inside the enclosure are the two trash receptacles, which are set back from the wall approximately three feet. And again, that enclosure is gated and has bollards to keep those enclosures, or sorry, to keep those receptacles in the enclosure. So to answer the, the question that came up, we do have a perimeter fence. It's a six foot privacy fence per Garden City standard. And that's one of the things that the DRC specifically looked at and finding that the design proposed was, was appropriate. So here are the kind of five bullet points they looked at. CMU enclosure, so sound dampening. It's gated. It's setback from the property line. On between the property line and that enclosure, we have a, a five foot pathway with landscaping. And then the perimeter fence and I'll give the council a quick rendering. So that's what we're looking at. And the appellant's property would be on the other side of the fence and you see a resident walking down our five foot pathway with the landscaping. So this is another rendering of that same location. And I've only pulled out these portions of the record to show the council that, that, that the DRC did carefully weigh this, this issue. So the appellant spoke at both of our, our public hearings before the DRC with the same arguments. And they carefully considered them and again determined that the best design in this case was the two enclosures. That being said, we, we don't have a dog in the fight here. We're happy to stick with the DRC's two enclosure design. Or we're also happy if it's the council's desire to, to only have one enclosure on the southwest side of the property. Notably, in this case, the project size sixty units only warrants one enclosure. So Republic Services has a minimum enclosure size. Both of these are that minimum size and one would service the project. I believe that's all I have for the council. I had some arguments as to parking, but it sounds like the appellant is sort of waived or not, no longer making those arguments. So if there are any questions on parking, I'm happy to answer them, but it sounds like we're, we're solely here on the single trash enclosure tonight. So I'd stand for any questions.
Any questions, Mister Bauer?
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Sir, so if we move it to the southwest corner, only have one. The main concern is that the half that residents would have to walk a little bit further to dump trash. Is that like, is that like sixty feet? How far is that?
Mayor Evans, council member, that, that is correct. So there were, there were two points. If, if I were to flip back to the testimony of the DRC, they, they sort of have two rationales. The first was to limit the intensity of use on either side. So we'd be splitting the number of trips. The second was yes, to reduce the distance any single resident would have to travel. So you know, rough calculation, if, if you're traveling the farthest distance, it's, it's approximately four hundred feet.
I guess my question is, is if we put it on one side, what's the extra distance? Is it four hundred?
Four hundred feet would be. So if you went from one corner of the property all the way to the other corner, it's four hundred feet. So the, the, the property is two acres total, perfect square. So each of those drive aisles is roughly, you know, two hundred feet.
All right, so I have to walk. Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mister Bauer.
Thank you.
Chapatur, do you want to close?
I think everything you said jives with what, how the project had evolved. The only things I want to point out would be that I think we had discussed and I had heard that the enclosure itself would be ten to fifteen feet off the set, off the property line versus seven. And then I know you said seven and then three for ten. So that seemed closer than even I was believing it was before. And maybe I've got that wrong, but I, I don't, I know I didn't have it wrong. That it was ten to fifteen, I think. And we were even hoping if it was happening, it was going to be closer to fifteen. And then again, a big part about this is it's hard to see the intensity of use by either one of them. Obviously one is big and I don't the idea of foisting it on another neighbor doesn't make me feel good either. It's, it's a difference from the other side to our side is it doesn't have these two houses that are oriented the way they are. It is truly a backyard like you might have with a neighbor where it's, you know, because their street, there's a cul-de-sac over there on the other side. And there's traditional homes at the front, street front edge and in the backyard. So that'd just be the argument I'd make about why our properties are different, these two on the other side. And again, it's it's the, it's this impasse we have where don't, once you've got this big project formed and it has these big blocks of apartments. I'm like the small appellant or, you know, that's, that's kind of late, not late to the game, at the whole game, but still like I can't move those buildings to have that garbage enclosure oriented some other way other than centrally. And again, like I'll point out, like the design of, of the, again, a design review committee, the architects feel sometimes although they had a good point about the functionality of splitting it, the, the appeal of the see, seeing through the project and not having the garbage enclosure central to the project to me is not the practical solution to how it affects neighbors. So I think that's something that still should be pushed on. Personally, so that's it. Thank you.
Any, any further questions, Jess?
Yeah, Mister Mayor. Sir Shopacher. Would, would, would you entertain a practical solution that had a wider setback for the enclosures and a taller enclosure?
I would. I think how we said we're sort of stuck. If, if there could be things done to the actual enclosure, both it's where it's positioned and how it's designed, that would help a practical solution. I would be up for that.
And, and I, I should have asked Mister Bauer that question as well. May I?
Yes, let's, let's. Any other questions?
Mister Mayor.
For shop. I I'm happy to have and entertain these discussions. I want to be a little cautious about redesigning the project from here, but.
I just had a point of my question.
We're here.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
So I, I was a little, one thing you mentioned when you, when you spoke first is that you were concerned that the two people living in those homes on your property would, would see the trash enclosure. Or that they would be close to it. But from the rendering, we've got actually two walls between your port, the porches of those homes and the actual receptacles themselves. One is a six foot fence. And then there's a setback and then there's another, I'm assuming it's another six foot fence. And then the enclosures, the receptacles themselves are behind that. So I, I guess I'm a little so from what I understood is your employees living in those homes would in no way see those trash receptacles because they'd have to actually look through two walls to see that. And so then I guess, are they really going to notice people just walking to the receptacle, opening the lid and throwing it in? Is it? I guess I'm wondering if they'd really even notice given that they have to look through, there's two walls between them and where they're saying. And I think you had mentioned earlier that you were concerned that they would have visibility in that.
I think it was.
Based on that rendering.
Yeah. I was, I am concerned that it's the sight, the sound, the smell. That's, those are the, the main things. And the, the site, I actually hadn't seen a, a rendering of the actual like nice architectural rendering of the actual drawing with the path. That's the first time I've seen that. So I would have been able to react to that if I'd seen it. So that does help. I, I wasn't sure too about exactly the, the height of the CMU enclosure either. Because I'd assumed I've seen, we've all seen, there's a million different designs for those, right? So I was assuming you know, this high, no roof. They open up the, you know, I don't, I have no idea how high that thing is. So just sort of making sure I'm pushing on that it's if it's going to be there, let's make it as, as intrusive as we can to us. if it's gonna be there, let's make it as as intrusive as we can to us.
And I guess that was my point, looking at that, that seemed pretty intrusive, but they have a wall, they have another wall, they have a path in between. That 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 would be hard pressed, that A, they'll never see it, and two, you know, if the obviously trash be um emptied regularly, that order probably is not as big of an issue. And and even hearing it, and these people opening up a lid, throwing it in the market back to the apartment. So uh, that was just my question, because you're, it kind of varied from your concern, your earlier assessment.
I think from that uh drawing, the the surprise to me was just the setback part. I thought it was ten to fifteen off the s- off the
Second.
Off the off the pri- property line, yeah, versus seven.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel? Um, I'll call you back in a minute, since you get to have the last word, Mr. Bauer. I'm gonna recall you.
Thank you, Mayor Evans, Jeff Bauer, six oh one, Wes Bannack. We'll try to address the questions from the council. Uh, first, I do just want to note, this isn't allowed use, this this property zone to R three um medium uh density residential, we're below the maximum density allowed, so we could do around seventy-one units where it's sixty units. Um, and to answer the questions relative to the enclosure design, here is the enclosure design. Uh, this is a standard um that Urstadt Architects has to comply with Republic Services standards. So the the CMU and gate are um gonna be roughly seven feet tall once you account for uh the paving and sidewalk and slope. So it's a, it's an eight-foot door, um but on the bound, on the property side uh facing the appellant, we expect the wall to be about seven feet tall. So it will be uh about a foot over the the privacy fence um that borders the entire property. And Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilmember Heller, to to answer your question about what we would be amenable to, um, we would be amenable to constructing a a taller enclosure, if that's the council's pleasure. We cannot currently accommodate any wider of a setback, and I think this uh shows uh the reason why is the the parking for that unit on the corner is garage parking. And the more we bring that enclosure out, it starts to block the the garage. Um, a- and the appellant is correct, um, you know, when we are initially looking at the design here, we we were, we were hoping to get this about ten feet off the property line, but due to the garage um location, as well as the minimum standards that Republic Services had, the seven and a half feet is the maximum we can get off the property on. And just one more thing to note, um these red lines indicate or or illustrate the the backup and turning radius radiuses required by uh Republic Services. So with the design that we have for this project, these are really the only lo- viable locations for this project with the backup distances that Republic Services requires. So there is no other central location that would work here. Um, and again, we, you know, we're looking at uh sixty units here, so we don't want to centrally locate our trash enclosure, uh you know, in the amenity space that we've specifically designed for those folks. I think I've hit all the questions, but if I failed to, please let me know.
Anything further from Mr. Bauer? Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw Parker, you get the last word. That's the way the process works.
Really quick, thank you. I mean, I I think I'm up against a good team here. This is a good design team. It's a big project. I'm just a guy that owns two, these two properties for my employees, like I said, and I needed to do my best to make sure that if, once this, we saw this design and the garbage dumpsters were right by our properties, that I did everything I could to make sure they were as less, it didn't affect these guys' home as much as possible. If there are practical ways to get, make it as good as it can, if they cannot be moved, that's what I meant about. It's a big project. Every parking space counted, every guest parking space counted. If perhaps there'd been more parking spaces, nine, I think they were below, it could have maybe been moved someplace, and it's like, we're locked into this now. And it's a little, it's frustrating, because I've been part of the input the whole time. Sometimes that's just the way it is. Thanks.
All right. Any further questions? Thank you. Uh. Hey, counsel, uh, the matters properly before the council, uh the four options are firm, vacate, remand, or reverse. Uh, I think we've heard the applicant uh agree to a higher uh enclosure wall. Um. And um so I think the council certainly uh, Mr. Waddams or Ms. Thornborough, uh in this appeal process, the council has the ability to modify a condition.
Yes.
Okay, just want to confirm that. So uh you can grant the appeal, which would result in a single enclosure for the project. Uh, you can modify a condition, uh, deny the appeal, but modify the condition to include a uh higher enclosure wall uh for the northeast. Okay, northeast uh unit, trash enclosure. You could send it back to design review. I'm not sure that's something you need to do. Um. It's open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, it seems to me that uh the uh appellant, as as well as the applicant, are agreeable parties and uh and I wish this would have just been mediated without coming to this point, but um it it seems to me the the uh best approach here is to deny the appeal and require a modified condition for the uh northeast container. Uh, the applicant is agreeable to constructing a higher wall, and that seems like the best fit for everyone. And unless uh my colleagues have a different input, I would uh move in that direction.
I'd second that. Uh, I I agree. I I can't, I can't find any error in the um designer view teams uh uh approval. Um. And I'm sympathetic to the landowners' uh concerns. So that strikes me as a reasonable approach. Having that extra two feet will help on the fence and having the double wall. I don't, I don't think the impact, and I would regret it, agree with what Russ said.
Hey, okay, for the, for the sake of clarity, let's be so specific on the enclosure height. Uh. A course of block is uh, are those eight-inch block or twelve-inch block? Or eight-inch? Okay. Uh, Mr. Bauer represented in his testimony that the the net, as it's currently uh designed, would be approximately seven feet high. So another course would add another eight inches, so it would be uh just under, would be seven feet, eight inches high.
So I have a point of clarification, Mayor. So are we talking about raising the height of the outside wall or the inside?
The the enclosure wall, the trash enclosure wall, because it's the is the the CMU.
Sorry.
Okay. The wooden, wooden fence will be eight-six foot and uh.
The wooden fence.
Yeah.
So it would seem that we even need two additional courses then to which would be over a foot, but one course wouldn't be just eight inches higher. Is that correct?
One course would, based on the testimony, one, adding one course would make it the wall uh seven feet, eight inches high.
So, Mr. Bauer, is your team opposed to two courses? All right, well then, let's, let's move that direction, counsel.
Okay, so the motions, they're not clarified, indicate uh appeal is denied, uh, an additional condition is placed on the applicant to add two courses in height, uh, the eight-inch block around the trash enclosure.
Yes, on the uh southwest enclosure.
Nor- northeast.
Northeast.
Yeah, northeast.
Let's leave the southwest out on there.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hey, quick call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone involved. Appreciate it. Item, special business item F two, uh, your April monthly staff reports are in your packet. As always, feel free to contact uh the various department heads if you have specific questions. Next item of business is item G two. This is resolution eleven forty-five dash twenty-three. Approving amendments to the Garden City Employee Handbook as previously adopted and providing an effective date. Counsel, uh, hopefully you had an opportunity to look at this in your packet. Uh, if there are questions um is Libby's available here to answer them, or I'll try to answer them. If it's clear, you can move ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I I move to approve resolution uh one one four five dash two three, a resolution approving amendments to the employee handbook.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing another per call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G three, authorize a mayor to enter into a professional services agreement uh with Kim Lee Horn for on-call planning services through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Thornborough is available if you have questions. As you can see, she's gonna be absent for a while this summer.
Um, Mayor, I'll stand for any questions. Uh, one thing that I would like to note is um the the contract has been reviewed by Mr. Waddams. He had a couple of comments and and um those have been addressed, but he hasn't had time to review them as uh we're working through that. And so perhaps it suggested that if you approve it, approve the contract tonight, that you approve it subject to uh making sure that those were addressed adequately.
Hey, subject to legal review. Any questions of Mr. Thornborough?
Would this be effective as of today?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, I don't remember the effective date. Um, but it would be when it's signed, I believe, and then it um
Okay.
You know, the the effective.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and 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 on that line, there are a couple items that I do want to note, that this would be effective through the end of the year. Um, it's doubtful that it would be needed through the end of the year, as well as there's a cap at fifty thousand dollars. Um, and certainly not anticipated uh to go up to that cap. Um, but Kim Lee Horn did leave the contract open quite a bit uh to be able to have some flexibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Hey, it's a pleasure, counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to authorize uh you to enter an agreement for professional service with Kim Lee Horn on call planning services through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, subject to uh secondary review of our legal department.
Second. That motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing another per call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes the business on our agenda for this evening. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.